Mic's on.
I'm just gonna speak loudly, if we could all rise for the plunger.
Provisions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to call for order. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Who was the first?
Yes.
Who made the motion?
Motion.
Okay.
Bill's second, Bill's second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hold on. We're here to request that Mr. Daniel Doolin, 31 Lark Street, and his attorney, correct?
That is correct.
And your name?
Yeah, my name is Ronald Kossar, K-O-S-S-A-R, with office at 402 East Main Street, Middle County. And again, I represent the applicant, Dan Doolin.
You can proceed, sir.
Okay. Please, the Mr. Chairman and members of the ZBA, as I said, I represent Mr. Doolin. Mr. Doolin is the owner of property located at 31 Lark Street in the village. He now has a, since he acquired the property in May 31 of 2016, he's used the property both as a single-family dwelling residence and also storage of equipment and vehicles in connection with the conduct of this landscaping business. The, and that is his sole livelihood, by the way. He acquired, Mr. Doolin acquired his residence from the prior owner Ralph Kent and Anna Kent, who as far back as, search to the historical records of the village would indicate as far back as May 31, I'm sorry, September 5th, 1979, obtained a certificate of occupancy, was issued a certificate of occupancy in connection with construction of an accessory garage on his property, which is in existence today. The prior, the predecessor owner conducted, from 1979 until the sale to Mr., to my client, in 2016, conducted a locksmith business. And he, in connection with the conduct of the business, he also stored some of his vehicles in the garage and some of his vehicles in the exterior of the garage, similar to the location of the vehicles that are now stored by my client, vehicles and equipment. Now, what we're asking for in terms of relief is, number one, a reversal of building inspector Terry's appearance ticket, citing us for being in, out of compliance with the zoning in that we weren't using exclusively for a single-family residence. And the appearance ticket is in the papers that I've submitted. The reason we believe in the first instance that Mr., that the building inspector's appearance ticket should be reversed is because he cited us for being, for conducting our business in an improper zone. But in reality, and that's technically what he charged my client with, in reality, he is not in violation, he is not conducting his business contrary to the zoning. He has the zoning. Your statute is very clear, he's located in an R-85 district, which is single-family. And there's, there's special permit exceptions carved out in your zoning ordinance, which specifically permits an R-85 zone user to conduct certain operations that are allowed, in this case, in a,
A.
RA district, I'm sorry, RA district. And that is premised on certain caveats where if, if the business, if, if the business in this case is conducting horticultural activities, which it is, he's a landscaper, that with, with special permits from the plant, with site plan approval from the planning board and certain area variances in this instance, from the ZBA, he can legally conduct his business, his landscaping business. And if you look in the submission that I gave you, I cited all the authority. It's a little convoluted, but I cited all of the authority. In the, it's in the Village of Washingtonville, zoning ordinance section 175-21, special exception uses, which provides within an R-85 district with certain special exception uses permitted, subject to approval of the planning, site plan.
All right, real quick, have you gotten those from?
No, no, we have not, and the reason, I made an application, and I was ready to file it with the planning board, but I was told, I disagree with their analysis, but I was told that I could not file on it, could not act on it because of the moratorium that you had passed. I don't agree with that, I don't think it has anything to do with construction, but that's, that's their position. So, what I did was, since I wanted to try to get a reversal of the appearance ticket, simultaneously make an application for certain area variances that would be required in this instance. And then, when the powers of being, in being allowed it, I would go back to the planning board for site plan. I don't really think, the site plan should be pretty perpontory, to be honest with you. If you look at the topography of that property, his house is in the front toward the road, and everything else, then you have the garage, and then in the back of the garage you have where he stores all his vehicles. He's very neat, he's in a straight line, looks like he's in the Army. You know, it's really, he keeps the property up very nice. The problem we need, we need under the ordinance, you need 200-foot setbacks from your property boundaries. There is two property boundaries, one which borders 35 Lark Street, which is owned by, I don't know, by Matthew Versensfeld, I don't know if that's the word. And that property, right now, is heavily screened with trees. And they have, right now, privacy. But we need, on that end, a variance of 125, an area variance of 125 foot. On the other side, on the opposite side of the property, we need a variance of 155 foot to the boundary line that borders the cemetery. There's the Washingtonville Cemetery there. We meet, we believe we meet all other setback requirements. There's gonna be no harm or foul to the First Presbyterian property because it's a cemetery. Okay, we're not making any noise. And on the other end, he, they have a lot of screening now, but what we're willing to do, as any condition of approval, at our own cost and expense, and my client naturally is a landscaper, is put up a wall of double, double-tiered staggered either pines or abracadines, or something that really grows like weeds and provides excellent screening. And that fellow will have more privacy than he has now, and probably total privacy after a few years. And my client, and there's no change to the character of the neighborhood. I mean, we, it's, this property has been used in the landscaping business since 2016. From 79 to 2016, as I said, it was, it was a locksmith business. So there's no change to the character of the community. And it's very sheltered and very secure in terms of screen, you can't see it from, from the road. And we've never had a complaint. My client purchased the property thinking that he was, it was illegal use because of the prior locksmith business. This is my client's livelihood, you know, he cannot afford to, if you can find it, to buy property, you know, a commercial piece of property to put up his, to store his vehicles.
Just for some clarity, I wanted to ask, how long you had the property?
Since May 31 of 2016, so it's over eight years.
Okay, and how old is the business is old?
How old, how long you been with it?
Fifteen, sixteen years, started in '08, so that's.
And where were you living prior to '16?
The Windsor, I was renting a shop in Cornwall that we were working out.
That was your primary residence as well?
No.
Now, the, I mean, denial is the relief we're asking for. It's gonna be an extreme hardship to my client because it's gonna deprive him of his livelihood, basically. And we believe that we have the zoning, we just need, in this case, two area variances, and then go back to the planning board at the appropriate time and get a, get the site plan approved. Which is actually a lower burden than what we're asking for here. Because these are variances, but albeit area variances, they're not use variances. And we believe everything is set forth in the papers here. And there essentially would be no change in what has been going on for the last eight years there. And we would, we would ask that this board reverse the decision of the building inspector and grant the two area variance, side yard variances that we're requesting. And if you have any questions, you know, we'd be glad, I mean, all we're doing is, we're implementing a granted accessory use under certain conditions. Now, if you have any questions or anything, I'd be glad to entertain them and try to answer them to the best of my ability.
Anybody have any questions?
Well, I'm curious about one thing, how do you think that a locksmith business is the same as a horticultural landscaping business?
It isn't. My point there, maybe I misspoke, or you misunderstood what I was trying to get,
Sure.
Is that there was exterior storage of vehicles. It has nothing to do with the use of the property per se. It's just that exterior storage of vehicles have always been in existence going back to 1979. At the, you know, for what we know, at least 1979.
That was separate, you know, vehicles, you know, I'm not sure, it was just a, you know, personal collection, but he had a lot, you know, a number of trucks, tractors, campers scattered throughout the property, aside, you know, not necessarily in use of the locksmith business.
And I might add, you know, this, if you look at our property now, everything is very orderly, very neat with the ministry, I mean, you really can't see it. So it's really no harm, no foul, and you protect the man's ability to make a living. You know, he uses that money to pay his mortgage, and there's taxes and insurance.
I understand that, and that was the basis for my, my question to you, is he was once living in New Windsor and rented a garage, and now you're saying one property is cure-all, you've never come to the village before for any kind of, right, any kind of permits or anything to do so? And, you know, this has brought to light now, all of a sudden, it's a financial hardship, which obviously doesn't, didn't exist, and I don't feel that does exist because it's been done before with this business.
Well, I think he was in the Windsor, and that was 16 years ago, and things were a lot cheaper. He's living in Washingtonville.
We all know that.
It's slightly, I would characterize that as more of a high-rank district here.
I had a question regarding the landscaping business, do you snow removal and that sort of thing as well?
Yes.
And so, so you're typically starting up your trucks at a fairly early hour in the morning on snow days or running an operation through snowy weather and stuff, and you're running the trucks up and down Lark, correct?
Well, typically when I leave.
The point I'm trying to make is that since, I imagine the business started out rather small, maybe in the very beginning, you probably didn't have as many clients, and now, I assume, I'm sorry, I don't know your business at all, but I assume that it's, that it's grown a bit and that you're relatively busy and that it improves the truck traffic and then the traffic along Lark Street, does it affect neighbors?
Not since I've moved here. You know, this has pretty much been the same size, you know, from the time I purchased the property until now.
And I would just, Mr. Kara, I'd like to point out, but I'm sure he's not the only snowplower in that neighborhood. It is a residential neighborhood. So I, any disruption he would have would be, in my view, the minimus. He's pretty far away from all the neighbors. And I'm sure, like I said, there's, in addition to village, snowplows coming up and down Lark Street, there's, there's other competitors. And, you know, remember, they only snowed twice this year. We only really needed two or three plows like that. So I think that's really the minimus, and I.
That's not a major part of your business, is it?
Um, no.
Yeah, that just hooks you on.
That's what I'm doing in the Windsor, but, you know, that's, you know, wind weather war is, which, you know, is.
Could I ask about how many trucks you have?
I've got six trucks.
With chippers and that sort of thing?
And how many, how many pieces of equipment, lumber, or stuff like that, do you keep them around?
Vehicles, truck vehicles.
Trucks, you said you had six?
Yes.
Do they have trailers with them too?
Some do.
Yeah, because.
Yeah, I've got three, four trailers.
I have a question, do you, obviously you're not the only person in your business, you've got other employees?
Two.
Two, and so they also travel to 31 Lark to park their car to pick up vehicles?
Yes.
The horticultural aspect of.
No, I was just gonna ask the horticultural part of what you're saying, can you expand on that?
Well, your own statute, and it's set forth in the papers,
Right.
states that if you engage in horticultural activities, in this case, there are other activities too, but it's not relevant. And a landscaping business is horticultural. Whether you're dealing with plants, you're dealing with shrubs, you're dealing with grass, whatever they do, that's horticultural.
So you're saying that, I'm sorry, sorry, you grow grass and plants on the property?
No, 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 no.
That is horticultural?
Not on the property. But his business is derivative horticultural.
Right, as a son who's in college for it currently, is the growing of plants, okay?
That is horticultural, he doesn't grow plants, he would buy his plants from a.
No, just the climate.
Right, he would buy his plants from a.
Appreciate that.
Nursery.
I'm just reading.
Right. So it is a nursery or something?
No, 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 no. He has an order, I want ten shrubs in my house. He goes and buys them from the nursery, and then plants them, mulches them, maybe maintains them, depending on the contract. That's horticultural, he's dealing with plants and trees and shrubs and whatever.
So let's, let's just take.
Well, that's, that's all horticultural, because the mulch gives substance to, have I ever been in his house?
I'm asking him, do you store the mulch that you have there?
No.
So you order it and then send it?
Yes, we pick it up.
Same thing with the plants, the only thing he stores there is the vehicles and equipment, that's it.
As far as tree trimming, tree removal, that sort of thing, do you separate businesses above?
A small part.
So you don't store any wood or anything out of the property from business, from offshoot of the business?
Just firewood.
Firewood for you, right?
Well, we sell some.
I just have one, maybe silly question.
Pat, please.
Having all those cars there, how do you fill them with gasoline, go to a gas station?
Yes.
Do you have, because sometimes some landscaping businesses have their own gas.
No, he would go to a service station.
I have one question, just for clarification on the application. So I interpreted this application as you asking the zoning board for the special use exception. Am I correct in understanding from your statement that you would ask the planning board for that?
What I'm, yeah, what I'm asking this board for, the ZBA, is first of all, the reversal of the appearance ticket, issued by the building inspector, and second of all, the granting of the area variances. We would then go back to the planning board for a special use permit, you know, à la site plan approval.
Anybody would like to speak back there, please?
Yes.
Say your name and.
Yes, my name's Mike Resiow, I live at 3 Lark Street. I just wanna say, I've spoken with Dan probably on two occasions, very pleasant, have absolutely nothing against Dan, his family or anything, very nice person. I've lived there since 1984, it's always been a quaint neighborhood. And contrary, well, I kinda take exception to the fact that there was a locksmith business there. I've lived there since, and I've even spoken to some of the relatives of Mr. Kent. And I asked them specifically, was there a locksmith business there? And I got the answer no, from one of the relatives. So I wonder really whether or not there was, if there was a locksmith business, which I think it was Mr. Morgan next door, possibly, that might have had a locksmith business. But if you go, I've been in Mr. Morgan's house, the son's house now, because he passed away, and they've got keys and stuff like that. So the property next to it, maybe that's 29, has maybe had a locksmith. But I don't ever recall Mr. Kent having a locksmith business, but regardless, the, the, my issue, and I'll let my friend here speak in a minute, but my issue is the traffic that's coming in and out daily. The, it's just, you've got trailers with equipment on the back, banging up and down the street. You've got employees that fly up and down the road. It's, it's quite annoying to be, I have grandkids, I see the little kid across the street, they've got a young son out there on a bicycle and stuff. So I think it's just not the appropriate place. I look around area businesses, like Anytime Electric, they're up at the, up at Dembex Farm, up on 208. He purchased a rental place for his equipment. So it's a hardship for all businesses, I would say, to have, to have that added expense. As far as wood and stuff, yes, there's a huge, huge pile. And they've had logging trucks go down the road, big logging trucks. So it's not just a small wood pile for burning in this fireplace or something like that. And pretty much, I mean, I've, I've spoken to the neighbors, and I went to about 85, I've got signatures from about 85% of the homes on the street. I didn't go to every home, but the homes I went to, I went to 14 different homes, I've got 12 people that were also opposed to this as well. So if you do the math, it's 85%. So I would just, like I said, I, I understand the circumstance and stuff, that, you know, it's a business, and it's hard to, you know, it's a, it's a cost to relocate, but there are other places to buy that rental property. Thank you.
Could I just comment on?
Please. Historical search in the building inspector's office indicated that this gentleman used, it was a home occupation type of thing, okay? It's, it's not quite like what we're doing here, okay? But he did have a locksmith business, and he did store vehicles. And other, both related to the business and unrelated. And was more like a junkyard at that time, I mean, that's probably the best way I can characterize it. So that's what our investigation, at least mine, indicated. And that's why I brought it to the attention of the board, just to show that it's been using, there's been accessory commercial uses of that property going back to 1979.
Do you have any visuals to?
I don't have any photographs of that or anything, just narrative. And if I'm wrong, I'm wrong. But that doesn't take away from our argument with respect to horticultural activities and the exception within the RA district, which is allowed under the zoning. So it's theoretically, and we're not asking for extreme relief here, these are area variances, not use variances. And, you know, in normal circumstances, but for the issuance of the appearance ticket, and I filed here to stay that in justice court, I would have made application to the planning board first. The planning board probably would have said, you need side yard variances or whatever, refer it to the, to the ZBA, to you guys, okay? And then I would argue my case before you. It's kinda like backwards here, I'm acknowledging that. But there's no reason that he should not be able to use that property as a, in his landscape, in the conduct and operation of a landscaping business with the two area variances and with site plan approval from the board, from the planning.
So one of the issues that I, this is me personally, see that you need these several things in order to move forward from a planning board in a moratorium, which, to me, we don't have the authority to do.
You are the planning board, I think.
Well, the planning board has that authority.
Right, but they.
To send it back to us, based on your site.
Right, but they made a.
But that's non-existent at the moment because of the moratorium. So we don't have that authority.
Well, you have the authority if you're area here.
We have, we, the way I see it right now, the only authority we have is to make a determination on whether or not the building department made the proper determination. The other two, we do not.
Well, I mean, I, I beg to differ, you, yeah, I respectfully disagree.
Please, go ahead.
But, you know, the moratoriums, as you may know, because I've been involved litigating them all across the county over the years, usually go on for 18 months. That's just as long as the municipality can string it out. And after that, courts have ruled too long, and struck them down. But you're nowhere near 18 months, I think, I don't know if you're in your first six months, if you're second, I really don't know.
We've gone past our first year.
You have even passed your first year.
No, do you have a first year?
Yeah, so I mean, this is gonna go on, probably, until the end of the year.
Right, so by your statement, first of all, to begin the process, is you need us to determine whether or not you can get an application to use the property as a business. So we're making the circle back and forth. So we're, we're making the circle back and forth.
To be very honest with you, if I could, I would enter into a, a, a deal with the, and I still might be able to do it, I don't know, with the building inspector, who's a very decent gentleman, Mr. Terry, with the approval of, of the court, uh, to stay, just to stay the, um, the, the enforcement of his own appearance ticket until we have a chance to sort this out. And I understand I'm going backwards now. But then, I am, I am where I am. I'm trying to protect my client.
We all have rules at the moment we need to follow, and unfortunately, two of the three, we cannot.
Well, there's no question you could, you could do the first.
That, that would be a discussion.
Right.
There's, um... There's no question they can do the first.
Right.
But, but that's just the appeal of the building inspector's determination.
That's correct.
Mm-hmm.
Well, if, if that goes, uh, I could hopefully wait until, it's kind of like a stay. I could wait until the moratorium is lifted, go to the planning board, they'll refer it to you, and essentially, we would get a second bite at the apple.
Assuming arguendo, that the zoning board, based on the moratorium, cannot issue the area variances and the planning board can't issue the site plan approval, what is your basis for reversing the building inspector's determination?
Because we're charged with operating a business in an improper zone, if you really look at the appearance ticket. Okay? This is not an improper zone. He just has to go through the process to get site plan approval for a special use permit from the planning board and then, then, uh, get the area variances from the, um, you know, from the ZBA. But the whole genesis of the appearance ticket has been impr- no, he improper zoning. We don't have improper zoning. The zoning ordinance is the zoning ordinance. And it allows us, um, the ability to operate a, um, a landscaping business if he is engaged in horticultural, um, activ- uh, activities, which he is. And then, as I said, we need the, uh, special permit from the planning board and we need the area variances from the ZBA. But the gen- the, the thrust of his application is that we're in it, we're using it in an impr- we're in properly zone. We're not. The statute permits it, we just have to go through the process. That, that's, that's our argument.
In your documents that you submitted to us, you did highlight an area here regarding, it says, private garage or barn-type structure for equipment and vehicles customarily used in connection with on-site agriculture, horticulture, or animal, husbandry, et cetera. So what exactly is he doing on-site that is...
What are you looking, what are you looking at specifically? Something with, has subparagraph three that's highlighted?
Yes.
Okay. What he's doing is storing his equipment and vehicles, which are necessary for the conduct and operation of his landscaping business. You have to store the vehicles to engage in your landscaping business. And the landscaping business per se is horticultural, acti- and horticultural activity, the end product of what he does. It's not on the pro- it's not on the property. He's just storing his equipment there.
Mr. Coase?
Yes?
Can you define for me what you believe horticultural is?
Horticultural, I don't have a dictionary here, okay? But horticultural is, uh, bi- businesses or hobbies, um, that, or not-for-profit activities which essentially advance, promote, grow, uh, landscaping, I mean, plants, shrubs, trees, whatever. So that's horticultural. It doesn't have to be, he doesn't have to be, have a greenhouse there.
The definition that I got, again, from a horticultural college, is the science and art of growing fruits, vegetables, flowers, or ornamental plants.
Well, he does that.
He grows.
He plants them?
No, the growing, uh, is horticultural.
Well, that, he plants them, watches them grow, he tends them, he maintains them, depending on the scope of the contract with the client. I have, uh, landscapers who do that on my property and, and I don't, I don't touch a shrub. They do. If I touch, they die.
All right, good. Sir, in the back, if you wanted to speak, sir? Please, stand up, take your name for us.
Yeah, uh, my name's Matt Verslivo. Um, I'm at thirty-five Lark, um, which is located directly, I guess, in front and above the location of Dan's property. Uh, we purchased the home about three years prior to, um, then moving in. Um, there was basically nothing there. There was one truck there. Um, we purchased the property on the premise that it was a residential area, that that property was residential, so no businesses would be back, back there. Three years passed, the, the landscape, uh, business moves in. Um, and I'll, I'll preface this by saying, I was not the first one to come to the village to report it being there. Um, and I won't name names, but other neighbors in the neighborhood did. Um, nothing came of that. The building inspector was there eight, some, eight, nine years ago, however many years ago it was. Nothing ever happened. Fast forward, we're here tonight. So I'm just wondering, you know, this could have all been avoided if, back then, someone had done their job and we wouldn't be in this whole mess. I wouldn't have to be here doing this. Um, Mike wouldn't have to be do- doing this. The other neighbors in the neighborhood wouldn't have to sign something to potentially hurt someone's business. Um, it brings me absolutely no pleasure to do that. Kills me being here. I own my own business. My father's own his own business. You know, I know how it goes. I know how hard it is. Um, but when it comes down to people being disrespectful in the neighborhood, I don't know who it is. I don't know who drives what car. But there are cars flying up and down the road. I have a five-year-old. She plays on the road. I've seen cars whipping in and out of that driveway without stopping, backwards, frontwards, doesn't matter. Ten o'clock at night, there's stuff going on outside. Nine-thirty at night, there's stuff going on outside. And I, and I don't mean, I don't mean people raking. I mean, there's machinery running. There's skate steers up in the street in front of my house, outside my daughter's bedroom at ten o'clock at night. Like, just all I needed was just a little respect and this would not have happened. This would, we would not have been here. You know, it isn't organized in the back. There is garbage in the woods. There is refuse in the woods. I, I didn't dump that there. Um, you know, I, I just, I, I, I'm at a loss of words. There's, if there's no comparison, even if there was a lands- uh, I mean, a, a locksmith there, there's no comparison. A guy taking her around in his, in his garage, I don't care what you do in your garage. But you run a machinery, you run a race car, ten o'clock at night, nine-thirty at night? No, no, I'm sorry. That, that does not fly with me. And I, and I've spoken to Dan. The first time I had any interaction was I had to go down there at nine-thirty at night while my, my pregnant wife was trying to sleep because it was a race car and, and the garage, with the garage doors open. It's like, I, I'm, I'm trying here. I, I am. And, um, like I said, I, I, I take absolutely no pleasure in this. Um, it's not, it, it, this, this is not who I am. I, I've been very patient, which is why we've gotten to this point, which is why it's taken this long. Um, because, and, and believe it or not, I'm not even the reason why, I, it, this, if, I don't know. I'm not even the reason why this is happening. So I, I, that's all I have to say. Um, and, and that's that, so.
I would just like to say that if, in fact, my client is operating race cars at ten-thirty at night, that's not in the conduct and operation of his landscaping business, and that could be...
But that's a noise ordinance.
No, that could be, I'm not arguing with you. I'm just saying that it has nothing to do, per se, with his landscaping business. And that may or may not be, uh, overboard. But that could be controlled by giving the area variances, conditioning the approvals. And, uh, as far as garbage or debris, if in fact that's the case, that could be picked up and, and cleaned out. Uh, I, that I have no knowledge of. And, uh, you know, it's possible it's not even from my client's property. But even assuming arguendo it is, that could be picked up and maintained. The point is, the guy's out of business. If he can't, uh, get the relief he's entitled to under the zoning, um, and but for the moratorium, I could have done this, uh, the, you know, through proper channels. And here I am. So I'm trying to keep him a business. It, it's a tremendous undue economic burden and hardship on him. And, uh, you know, we're, we're requesting that to at least overturn and reverse the appearance ticket, table everything else, and I would probably try to enter into a, a, um, a, a resolution with the building inspector where, uh, when the moratorium is finished, we make immediate application. I already have the papers prepared. I just couldn't file it. I actually sent the messenger down here to file it.
I, I believe all those filings that you're saying should have been done in two thousand sixteen.
Well, I, I was...
We wouldn't be here, obviously. And, you know, it, it gives no one any pleasure to place hardship on anyone. However, there's, there's rules in which we need to follow. And so explain to us real quickly, okay? Based on the property being in the RA D five district, why you feel we need to overturn the, uh, the decision by the building?
Because that is the, your parents' ticket, if you read it closely, is based upon improper zoning, not failure to, um, make proper app, uh, uh, application through the proper channels to obtain your special use permit from the planning board and, and the area variances here. The zoning is already provided for. It's just implementing the, uh, the process that you have to go through to obtain, to, to obtain the, uh, the use of the property for that purpose. But, you know, that's what we're charged with. He should have been more specific in his charges.
Right. And in order to get that processed, you still need two variances, correct?
I need two variances from you.
Correct.
Area variances, not the use variances. And I need the special, uh, the, the site plan approval from the planning board, the special use permit. And yes, I'm not arguing with that. That's not my argument with respect to the appearance ticket.
No, I understand.
It's just, um, he wasn't broad enough in his, in his charge, and therefore it should be thrown out. And that's what I would argue before the, uh, the judge as well.
Have you made an application to the village board of trustees for hardship exemption from the variance?
I don't think this is within, no, I haven't. And the reason I haven't is I don't think this is within the moratorium. This particular, is it within the mor- moratorium ordinance? There's no construction. There's nothing.
I disagree with respect to the area variance. I don't, with respect to the appeal, yes, I agree that, that the zoning board has jurisdiction to hear it, but I think the language in the moratorium is absolutely clear that they can't grant an area variance without a hardship exemption from the village board of trustees.
Yeah, but the standard to get a hardship, I've been there, and the standard to get a hardship variance is a very high burden. And I could make the application. I wouldn't be that optimistic in obtaining, um, approval, okay?
But I'm just, for the record, you haven't made that application.
No, I have not. I have not. I, I have not, okay? But I could. By the time it's granted, the moratorium will be lifted, so.
Okay, um... Anyone else? Any questions? Would you like us to proceed on going process? Should we take care of the two easy ones, which we do in how that jurisdiction?
Um, so the way I read the application, I read it as they were asking you for the site plan exception, which you don't have jurisdiction on multiple grounds. And there's also the issue that I don't believe that it's a horticultural use. Um, but they're not asking from that, they're not asking that from you. So area variance, I, I don't know your views on it. You've heard my views on it.
Well, I just put through, I just gave the history of the ordinance. I didn't, no, ask them for a special use permit, just the area variances.
But you, you did, it's...
I, I, no, no, that, that, that goes with the planning board.
I mean, it's, it's application to board of appeals, um, and type of appeal, a special permit under the zoning ordinance.
Well, as, you could argue that a, a, an area variance is like a permit.
There are also, but...
I did not...
Under sub C, there's, there's a section for variance, which isn't filled out, which is my confusion.
Well, I didn't fill out because it was in the papers. Okay? Um, and, but I certainly, if you read the papers, I'm asking for...
Look, I, I got what you... Now that I know that you're not asking us for a special use exception from, from the zoning board, it makes things easier.
Okay.
No. That was a big confusion of mine, and probably for the board too.
Dan, that was my fault.
Can we go into executive?
You may. You'll need to move to go into executive session.
Okay.
And then, given that there are people here and we're going to come back in the session, we should go to a different room.
Okay. Can, can we use the back room or not?
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
We'll go in the back then. Okay. Want you to go into executive?
Executive.
Right, on favor?
Favor.
Uh, on back. Thank you.
One second. Sorry, I'm, I'm taking minutes, so I'm...
Second?
We second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Mr. Coase, you are no longer correct asking for a special use exemption. Is that correct?
That, that's correct. That, that was just, uh, I was using language loosely. We're asking for area, uh, the reversal of the, of the appearance ticket and the use variant. Then I have to go back to site two, uh...
Okay, so we're, we're going to table that? Make it a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, on the application for area variances, which we do that currently have, we're going to deny for the lack of hardship on the village board, for a hardship from the village board. Christopher, can you read that for us?
Sure. Um, I know that the village, current village moratorium, it was enacted with local, uh, by local law, two of two thousand twenty-three, and renewed by local law, eight of two thousand twenty-three. Section four A one of that, those local laws states, "No land use approvals shall be issued for any use or developments in any districts within the village without the approval of the village board of the village of Washingtonville, which approval shall not be considered except in the event of proven hardship." Land use approvals is a defined definition, defined term. Land use approvals means building permits, cer- uh, certificates of occupancy or completion, site plan approvals, subdivision plaits, special exception use permits, special permits, area and use variances, and architectural approvals. And so no land use approvals shall be issued for any use or development in any districts, and an area variance is a land use approval under the moratorium.
I would ask for a vote here. We are going to deny, again, for the lack of a hardship from the village board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. On the last thing, and you have asked us, um, make a determination on whether or not the building department made a correct judgment on your appeal ticket.
Uh, appearance tickets.
Appearance ticket, my, um, appearance ticket. In my judgment personally, in my state, I, I believe... In my judgment personally, in my space, I, I believe you need a special use exemption for that. And so I'm going to just ask for a vote, denial or approve?
Deny because you would deny and give the reasons.
Correct.
You would vote to deny and give reasons. Or vote to approve and give reasons.
And, and again, my, my reasoning personally or from this board is that we, you also need a special use permit, which we cannot give you at this time. Am I, am I voting on this, Chris?
Yes, you'll take a vote. Denying the appeal.
Right. I'm voting to deny.
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 It's a four oh. And close out. I would like Christopher to authorize a complete-
I think you mean, you want to authorize, you want to vote to authorize, cancel, to draft a resolution encompassing the board's decisions?
Thank you very much.
And the rationale therefore, which I will, which I or my firm will draft and provide to the chairman for a signature. So you will vote to authorize me to draft the resolution and the board will then vote to authorize you to sign the resolution once it is provided to you.
That is correct. All right, so-
Motion, what Chris just said.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Or a?
Thank you.
Chris, could you send me a copy of that one, so?
Absolutely.
Okay. Just tell me the date of the decree.
Yes.
No, I was planning on sending you a copy anyway.
Oh, we should return.
Would be unfair for me not to.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four oh to return.
Who made the motion and seconded it? Seconded it.
I made the motion very quick.
And we all have four oh.
Great.